Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. It is 4:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
So seconded.
Follows in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio or video recorded? Yes, Mr. Gasper.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but I believe seeing all Mr. Warner's from on remote, we have to do everything. Roll call, vote.
Oh, good point. Roll call, vote for the meeting session?
Yep.
Aye.
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 Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. David and Stacy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Mr. Gasper for the 7th and the 16th?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And you said you abstained for the 21st.
Do you want me to make the motion for the 21st?
Please.
I get the motion to approve the minutes of January 21st.
I'll second that. All those in favor, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. We have a timeline here for town meeting. Today, we have to establish the town meeting date. After going back and forth with Mr. Kelly, everyone else, and the town clerk, it's looking like June 2nd, 2025 is probably the best date for this. Gentlemen, have any questions or comments?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to establish town meeting date of June 2nd, 2025?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Mr. Patson. Once again, as we don't have everybody in the same room, and Mr. Gasper missed the last meeting due to illness, we just put Town Administrator Search on here. We've added some stuff in here. Ultimately, what I want, gentlemen, is if we can take the best information from all of these job descriptions and really put it together so we can get this process started as soon as possible. We have a pretty hectic timeline leading up to the end of the fiscal year, so the quicker we move on this, but I also want to make sure that what each of you feels should be in a job description for the town administrators in there. So I don't think we really need to worry about voting too much tonight, other than just making sure that you get your information and any modifications you want to make to the job description to Mr. Kelly as soon as possible, so we can type it up and come up with a job description for that role, so we can roll this out and advertise as soon as possible.
Very good, Mr. Chairman.
Number three, Department Board Fee Schedule. This is more of a blanket thing that I wanted to put on here for ultimately anybody that has a fee schedule for permitting. To ultimately run through, we've had some department head changeovers and a lot of fee schedules and costs for different things haven't been updated in quite some time. So I want to have Mr. Kelly reach out to each commission or board that has any permitting fees, such as ConCom Building, Board of Health, anybody that hasn't updated their fee schedule in a while, to take a good look to make sure we're not losing anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
We can have Department of Public Works, Department Heads do that as well.
Excellent. Yeah, I think everybody that...
So I think it would be important that every department puts a list of what they're permitting, what the permits are, and what the fees they are that are required, right? And whatever research they've done from other municipalities surrounding area of what they charge versus what we're proposing to charge, so we can see where we're at in the realm of fee schedules.
Yep.
But I think it's important that each department make their own list of every permit that is provided by that department with a fee attached to it.
Agreed.
And what other communities are doing as well.
Mr. Kelly, is that something you need a motion for?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a great initiative. Can we put a date certain as to when we need to get this report? Because I think, you know, people are working hard, but without some type of deadline, you know, it becomes one of those things that sometimes it doesn't get the attention it deserves.
Thirty days. Thirty days sound good?
By me.
Yep.
Shouldn't take that long.
First meeting in March?
We can have a little grace.
Yeah, first meeting in March, whatever you want to do, right?
Yeah.
Making sure everybody, I mean, everybody has a fee schedule now, but let's just break it down department by department, right? And then our office can put it on one sheet, right, for everybody to look at it.
Report to the Board, first meeting in March.
Sounds good to me.
If you want the department heads there.
If there's a proposed increase in fees, that would be nice, on why?
Yep. Or if they've any changed anything in either direction, as long as there's a justification, but it would be nice to have them in the meeting. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We have some appointments. So we have to unappoint a member of the Finance Committee.
Chris DiRugio.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to unappoint Chris DiRugio at the Finance Committee. Unfortunate.
Seconded.
All those in favor, roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
I am a yes.
And I am a yes.
Extremely unfortunate for Mr. DiRugio, but he has an expanding family and expanding responsibilities in his personal life that just kept him away from doing the job, so he would have been a great individual for the FinCon, but I thank him for his volunteerism, but I also thank him for the phone call that I received from him with regret for the resign.
Yep. With that being said, we also have a letter of interest for an appointment to the Finance Committee from Lisa Orlowski Tomlinson. She is a, she has a master's in business, seems like she has some pretty good financial understanding. I don't know if Chairman got a chance to read her letter?
Yeah.
Accepting a motion to appoint Lisa Orlowski Tomlinson to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor, roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Can we send out a letter to her?
Yep.
To get Swan in town clerk's office ASAP?
Yep. Budget season, we gotta go. All right. Abatement, a betterment. This is something we do every year.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to abate the principal and interest for parcel 24-177.179 and 24.166, so a phase two betterments.
Is there a second? No, thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, we do have a letter of resignation from the ZBA Clerk, Kara Koska. Dear Chairman Brown and members of the Board of Selectmen, I am writing a formally resign from my position as Secretary of the Cushion Zoning Board of Appeals. While this decision was not made lightly, educational and professional commitments require my attention at this time. Thank you again for this opportunity. I wish the Board continued success in all its endeavors. Ms. Koska is entering, leaving college, still going to college, and she's got a lot of commitments, so she did this for as long as she could, but she has priorities in her professional life, and I just want to say thank you very much for your time on the zoning board of appeals. I appreciate it, and I would take a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Kara Koska with regret.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. With that being said, we have a letter of interest from Mr. Paul Sullivan to get the ZBA caught up. Mr. Sullivan is currently employed by the town, has done minutes, and he was the former clerk over the planning board, and he is willing to take over as the ZBA Secretarial Clerk. Is there a motion to appoint Paul Sullivan as the ZBA Secretary Clerk?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. As you guys know, we have quite the new Conservation Commission, lots of new members that need to get, Mr. Suza, MACC training.
MCC, yeah, yeah.
MCC, there's various acronyms worth of training. And at this point, based on the training budget, it doesn't entirely cover all the new members, plus also with Mark, our new conservation agent, also going to training. I was diving through the Wetlands Protection Act in general, and we collect fees from various applicants throughout the town for conservation, and we have a fund that allows us to spend fees appropriately. And one of the big parts of that is you can spend it on any train related to wetlands protection. Because there's so many new members, and even the ones that have been there for a year still haven't gone to training yet because it's timed right, am I correct in that?
Well, it is, Bob, because we get, we get to go to class last year, so last year I took my fundamentals, it was my first year, so this year I'm looking to advance and go to the next classes, so I can keep advancing in it and learn more and more every time I go.
Sure.
Excellent.
So with that, I'd like to authorize the Conservation Commission through Mr. Kelly to utilize the Wetland Protections Act funds to fund training.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor, roll call, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Mr. Kelly, can you just make sure that you get something from the training program to show that members have participated?
Attended.
And attended those meetings?
It's that Holy Cross.
Or reimbursed.
In the winter.
That's fine.
The more training they can get, the better off we're gonna be as a community, so.
Hope it doesn't snow that Saturday.
We had nine people going this time.
Good.
That's a really good turnout.
That's excellent.
Especially depending on where you park, because Holy Cross just goes like this. In the snow, it'd be chow.
Absolutely. Very good. Next on the agenda, Reserve Fund Transfer Council on Aging Furnace. Looks like we got a quote here for 80-plus gas LP furnace installation with four ton condenser and coil, the amount of $9,947.
Mr. Chairman, the Director of the COA would have been here except there is a death in her family, and so she and I have vetted this out, and I would advise that this is the most appropriate way to go, not tapping into the articles. And also, she has attached just a brief summary of what she was going to address with the Board as far as some of the repairs that have been done down at the COA since her appointment, because she was planning to address the Board, because I know the Board likes to hear from Department Heads on this, but I think especially in the winter, and we're operating on short, one device instead of two.
Correct. Not to mention the Council on Aging is technically a shelter.
And a heating.
So let's play it safe.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Reserve Fund transfer in the amount of $9,950 for said purchase and repairs.
Seconded.
All those in favor, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. With that being said, I'd like to offer my deepest condolences to Ms. Golda and Eric from the town clerk's office for their loss, and if they need anything, absolutely, we are here for them. Cushion at Lakeville Animal Shelter Agreement. This is also something we do every year, pretty standard. Becky asked for this, I assume?
Yes, I ran it by her, and she said please.
Is there a motion to accept the Cushion at Lakeville Animal Shelter Agreement?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Gentlemen, back to some old business here. We had Mr. Tibbles in a little over a month ago to discuss some projects he had going on, so with that, Mr. Tibbles, going back to discuss the bunker repairs and the golf sprayer.
Yes, good evening. We have, as you, we discussed at the last meeting, we had one bid for our bunker project. The bunker project came in for the three holes, the sixth, seventh, and tenth at $137,000. At that last meeting, I was instructed to contact the bidder and see what would be his last date of contact in regards to securing his services. There were two time periods delineated in the bid. One could have started in April with a completion date in June. The other was quoted to start in August, the end of August, and with a completion date at the end of November. Given his schedule, when I contacted him, basically the April or early portion of availability was booked, so we're looking at the project to take place in August, or start to take place in August of 2025. So the Golf Committee asked me to come back, the Golf Committee unanimously approved the project, but they asked me to come back for the Board of Selectmen to get verification of undertaking the project in that timeframe, and so that's why I'm here for that to figure out.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
So Steve, under the old contract schedule of unit prices, it just talks about contract time, and that's basically what we're talking about, right? Because the contractor can't get that work done, because it says work can commence in the spring anytime after the 31st of March.
March.
And will be complete by June 27th, or start anytime after the 18th, which doesn't make sense, because it says the 18th is whatever, right?
After 18th of August, 2025.
The only available time is for them to come in August.
August, yes.
By them. And you said hole six, seven, and 10, correct? There's two bunkers on 10 that we had talked about?
There's one bunker on the sixth hole, one on the seventh, and two on the 10th. The 10th is a little bit more of an involved project, because the approach is going to be expanded up into the right side of the green to encompass the front bunker, so that will take more time than the other, than any of the other two.
So can you, on this spreadsheet, I don't know if this is correct, but we talk about six, seven, and 10, but it says hole number 18 fairway, concept B, and it gives this outline, and it's incorporated in this $137,000, but we're not doing anything with hole number 18, are we?
No.
But it's on your description, so can you just re, take a good look back at this before we move forward with the contract or issue?
I don't, this is right?
So the first line on the breakdown, you need...
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the schedule value.
Schedule value. It says hole number 18 fairway, concept B, and then it doesn't mention anything about holes, bunkers for hole six, seven, and 10.
.................................... Yeah, I don't know why he would have listed hole number 18 fairway, concept B, but that, but basically what he's given is the breakdown of the particular steps that are going to be undertaken to do the bunker work.
That's fine, I'm just asking you to make sure the paperwork is then correct.
Yeah, I will get, yeah, I will get a...
Before we sign?
Clarification from that on him, from him tomorrow, or maybe this afternoon if I can get him on the phone.
Okay. So the last time we had this conversation, gentlemen, it was, you know, more of a financing issue, right? Because it's $137,000 for the bunker work, we have left remaining roughly $101,000 in the article, which means a shortfall of $36,000, and in the same meeting, he made a request for, I believe it was a $75,000, somewhat dollar sprayer that we were putting on hold on that. However, after talking with Mr. Tibbles in the crew, the maintenance crew down at the golf course, this work is now being kicked into the new fiscal year, so it opens up an option for the Board without scrambling for funds throughout the budget. We can go for an article as long as the Golf Committee's on board with the Board of Selectmen, but we go for an article in the spring town meeting from the surplus of golf for the bunker work for the new calendar year. We can use the current $101,000 article to purchase the sprayer, so we're clean and freeing clear of that expense. There were some options that Mr. Tibbles laid out to us in that previous meeting several couple months ago, and it was a financing option, and quite honestly, we have the money to pay for it, we should just be paying for it. The finance option is actually, it would cost us 20% more for this piece of equipment to finance it, which is absolutely ridiculous. Comes out to $15,000 and change, which makes no sense that we can use that $15,000 somewhere else. So we have the funds, we have the funds available in the reserve to purchase this piece of equipment, move forward with another article for the bunker replacement. My opinion is, let's fund the sprayer from the article and put an article on town meeting floor for the bunker work in 2025, which would be fiscal year for the town 2026.
Correct.
Yep.
That sound about right, Steve?
Yes, it does.
And Steve, I popped into the end of your meeting the other day and overheard you guys discussing putting together your articles. I assume the Chairman of the Golf Committee is gonna work to connect the...
Yeah, we put, Mr. Kelly provided that schedule, I presented that to the Golf Committee so they knew what the timing was. I think one of them may have been copied on the original email, I'm not quite sure. They will, that will be a point for discussion at the next meeting, I believe. So I can update them on this information now, give them some direction as to where they might go with the article.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
When I was with the maintenance crew, Mr. Tibbles, I also did look at the older machine that we have, and it's roughly 15 years old, Steve, somewhere around 14, 15?
It's going on 15, it's 14 years old now.
And when I was talking to Mr. Tibbles and the mechanic down there, we went, I was looking at the parts that they replaced in the rear end of it, the last go-around and the expenses of those components, along with some other valves for the sprayers that were leaky that Mr. Tibbles talked about, and, you know, we've come up with a rough number of somewhere around $30,000. That's not including the cost of the time for the mechanic to do the repairs. So if you look at that, and you say the machine's probably good for a few more years, you know, 30 grand, cost of ownership's $10,000 a year, you look at $75,000, if that's the maximum price on this, on this new sprayer, and you get 10 good years out of it, plus, I mean, your cost of ownership is $7,500 or less, that machine, it's in good shape, the older machine is still in decent shape, but you don't know what else will go wrong with a machine that's 15 years old to spend 30 grand now.
Plus five, I think you're saying.
I have a, I have a little bit of an issue with that, so, you know, at this point, I'd be fine with buying the new sprayer with the article money, so I'll make a motion to purchase the sprayer. We talk about trade-in too, Steve, and they only want to give us a small amount of money for the trade-in. I think the value of the machine is much greater than the $4,500 that the company's willing to give us for a trade-in off the $75,000 price, so I talked to Steve about, we'd have to, the Board of Selectmen need to declare a surplus or something for sale. We have a special form that we have to fill out, the Board would have to determine it, but there is a thing that municipalities use, a website municipalities use called Mini-Z Bid, where you can put equipment and things up like, and anybody from home can bid on stuff, you don't have to be a municipality, you'd be bidding on it, so it'd be worth a shot to try to expedite that, get it to the Board of Selectmen to say that we'd like to put it up for auction, post it on that website, and give it a trial run, and see if we can sell it for more than we can get as a trade-in.
So what you need is something that asks for it to be declared surplus, and then put on that.
So the same form does it? We pick which one it will be, so we're just gonna say it's surplus equipment, and then at that point, once the Board agrees it's surplus equipment, we can put it on that Mini-Z Bid website and see if we can get better than $4,500, which I'm pretty sure we can. Just the parts alone, it's probably worth double that, right? Just someone else that might have a machine.
Yeah, someone, that would, that would be probably what someone would do. They would, you know, they'd come look at it, and if they had a similar machine, then they could use it, you know, basically as a graveyard unit, pick off it and not have to buy new parts. I mean, if you had something like a, you know, a, you know, if you, for some reason, say you hit a tree, you bet your boom, well, the boom's gonna cost you about 500 or 600 bucks if you have to buy just the boom, where you could just steal it off of the extra machine, so that might be something that someone would consider doing.
It's, I think it's worth a shot to try and auction it off through that website.
Can't hurt. Yep.
Yes, but let me check to see through OIG and DOR if it's a single approval with the Board, or since it's an enterprise account, it might be a dual approval, two votes necessary.
Would that be from the Golf Committee and us?
Yeah, that's fine. If it's just, even if it does go, we could put it through the Golf Committee as well. I don't think anybody's gonna say, well, no, let's just take the $4,500, we could probably get double that or maybe more, who knows, right? You can actually put a minimum bid on it, say a minimum bid, 5,000, right? And let it rip and see where it goes from there. People bid it up, and you only leave a bid opening for 30 days. And then Mr. Tibbles, I had a conversation with him, the contact is at Toro?
Yeah, Toro Products, it's our...
So you can talk to them folks, and he's gonna open that line of communication back up with them to see if they would be holding their offer of that trade-in price, and let us go off and do what we're gonna do, and see what we can do, and if not, the $75,000 machine will cost us 71 if we let it go for trade-in at the $4,500, so.
Sounds like a plan.
Think it's a win-win all the way around?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Do you have that form? Can I?
I'll need a description of the machine for you.
Yeah, I can, I can do that, I just didn't know if there was a particular form that you needed to set, maybe?
It's online, well, we can take care of it.
Okay.
Steve, the other, the one other thing I want to mention to you about is, because I hear a lot about maintenance Mondays?
Yes.
And I know we've been doing it only for the last couple of years, but I, we're losing pretty significant revenue by having maintenance Mondays, and I talked to a lot of people that are aggravated about not being able to golf on Mondays, and we've just started doing it in the last two, maybe three years max, but we hadn't done it in the prior 20 years, so could you take a look at what it would take for you, whether it be part-time personnel, an additional piece of equipment, whatever it would take for us not to do and shut down the golf course on Monday mornings and have maintenance Mondays?
Yeah, I can, you know, I can basically address that now. The reason we had, I requested maintenance Mondays twofold. One is because some of the aeration practices we have, we are doing or have to do, we can't, basically can't stay ahead. And by that, I mean, we can't get the entire course done in one day. So my idea behind the maintenance Monday for aeration was this, that if we had the maintenance Monday with the new equipment that was approved, specifically that small sweeper that we picked up last year, we could finish all 18. If I don't have the maintenance Monday, then I have to do six or seven one day, six or seven the next, and six or seven the third. So what that means is that I've got six holes disrupted on one day, six holes disrupted on the next, and six holes disrupted on the third. Most of the time, the golfers are significantly more happy if you disrupt them all at once, and then that way, they're putting on the same surface for, I don't know, one or two days. I mean, actually, the time that we use is a quarter inch, and by the time we go out there, sweep up the plugs and roll it, you know, it's going to be thrown in within a day or two. The other reason was that we just don't, that's why I figured it would be best to try to get that done. I mean, right now, we have two aerators that are circuit 2006, one's a PTO attachment, the other's a walk behind. In order to accommodate getting that done, we'd have to, we'd have to park the walk behind, and we'd have to get a second aerator. Basically, the one we'd look at was a Toro 460, 484, which would right now run somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $60,000, and we'd have to put that on our second tractor, which we normally run the backhoe off of, in order to accomplish that. I know some people are concerned about maintenance Mondays. I mean, it's, it's a couple hour, extra hours in the morning. I mean, I think, I mean, this is something that the Golf Committee could discuss, but it gives, give you an example, if we were to review our starting times, and for instance, Monday, we have three hours delayed from the original eight o'clock starting time. Well, if you start, your starting times in the T-sheet is seven o'clock on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then you pick up four hours for the three hours that you lost. So I mean, that's something for the golf committee to discuss, but I remember, you know, I've been here going on, what's this, 2025, going on 25 years? And they used to, I mean, used to start somewhere around six, six o'clock, 6:30 in the morning. They'd be right on my, my tail. So there's different ways to look at it. And again, the other reason we had maintenance Mondays is for spraying fairways. We have 29 acres of sprayer, fairways. And even with two 300 gallon sprayers, you can't get them done in two hours. And then what happens in that case is that someone, people catch up to you. So they're hitting into the sprayer, which isn't good for the spray person, because when you're spraying, you really can't shut the machine off in the middle of the fairway and sit there and wait. Because once you shut it off, the boom stop, then you have to back up and you have to make sure that you get it turned on in the right spot. You're going to overspray and depending on what you spray, you could cause some turf damage. The other thing is that technically speaking, golfers are not supposed to be on the playing surface till the material dries on the leaf blade. That's state laws pertaining to pesticide application. So if, even if we weren't being hit, then, you know, there really, there needs to be that little bit of extra time. So what we normally do now is I'll do, I'll do one tank and Kevin will do one tank. By the time you get the tank back, turn it around, fill it back up, we're caught. So we do the first six holes one day, then we try to finish up the next day. Problem being, especially in the cushion, usually around 8:30, nine o'clock, the wind starts to blow. Wind starts to blow over 12 miles an hour, you get spray drift and your material's not going where you want it to go. So instead of wasting material and causing a spray drift problem, we have to stop. If it rains, we have to stop. If the humidity changes depending on, or if there's an outing or something, that's why we try to get that. Again, I know some people are concerned, some, you know, it's, it's a couple, early morning golfers. As a matter of fact, I think a few people have taken to that wonderful thing called social media to tell me I'm a criminal and trying to lose the town money by not, not, you know, doing that. Not that it's a significant factor, but maintenance Mondays is a common practice in the industry. Some courses do it, some courses are closed for the entire day, other courses take two hours. Again, I will, I can scramble if they, if it's decided not to do it, then I'm going to have to get the job done the best way we can get it done.
The only reason why I bring it up is because there has been people that talk to me, I'm not a golfer, but they have talked to me about revenue loss. Whipple, GM pack solid, right? So I've done some calculations on those 30 hours. We're losing roughly 80,000 a year for maintenance Mondays. That's my, my calculations. I've actually had a conversation with Dana and he goes, it could be more, but that's a pretty good number that you're using. So with that, 80,000, it's a lot of money every year. We weren't doing it three or four years ago. Now we're doing it, Steve. I'm just saying, can we start trying to think about maintenance Mondays and maybe how with different skinny, to cap it a different way? You just brought up something about maybe starting the day off half an hour, an hour earlier to capture more rounds of golf. If that's what it is, let's figure it out, right? You do need time in the morning to get out there and do your job and sometimes in the season.
Well, we're a, you know, we're a public golf facility. If you look at, you know, Franklin Park, George Wright, two golf courses in the city of Boston, check the tee time sheet. Tee time sheet, I believe, six o'clock, 6:30. You know, that's where, that's where you, if you want to, you can pick up extra revenue. And again, if they want to cancel maintenance Mondays, I won't do it, but there's going to be circumstances where I get out there and people are going to have to deal with equipment being out there and things being done and, and, you know, like people complain, oh, the sprinklers are on the fairway. Well, if you put a wetting agent down, you want to water it in. Use the first fairway as an example. You've got six, 12 rows on that fairway. You run for 10 minutes apiece to run, water in the wetting agent, you got 120 minutes. That's two hours. So somebody's going to be awful wet if they're on that in two hours. But, you know, that's, we're trying to do, what we're trying to do is take our golf facility and our playing conditions and step them up the next step by doing small tiny aeration frequently as opposed to big holes that people don't like. We're trying to roll our greens more often, excuse me, we're trying to spray liquid fertility products and liquid soil amendments so we can cut back on our water use in times when we don't have, when the state sends out a regulation that basically says stop. The state of Massachusetts considers fairways and green, or greens and tees to be essential. Fairways are not essential. So as soon as you get a, the initial drought warning, like we did, was it 2020? We had a series of drought warnings. Actually, we had a drought warning last year. You have to cut off your fairways and then you have to send notification to them that you've done it. So what we've been trying to do through the use of wetting agents, kelp products and other soil amendments, is get our fairways healthier earlier to get in the season so they can make deeper roots and so they can substantiate or deal with that heat.
You're talking about the state doing that in the drought season because we're drawing off ponds, right?
Well, the state does, they'll, they'll do it to all golf courses. They have, as a matter of fact, I just got the paperwork. Our, our water withdrawal permit was supposed to be renewed and then the state ran into some issues where they extended the period for renewal. So right now, it's on their books for renewal. I just figured, I just filled out all the paperwork again and sent in our drought management plan and they actually ask you to choose whether or not you're going to go by time or whether you're going to go by acreage. And you have to give them, for instance, if you go by time, say you run a green for 10 minutes normally, under this drought, non-drought condition, you can run at that time. When you go to a, a stage one drought condition, you have to cut back by X number of minutes. Then you go to the next, then you have to cut back by that. And once you give them that report, they hold you to that schedule that you come up with. So again, I mean.
That's because you're operating, not to keep talking about this, but that's because we're operating off the withdrawal permit and we have a hydrant at the top of the road so we can put a meter on it and pump water to you too. We have that as an option.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be something that'd be taken up with them. I mean, my point in mentioning that was just simply trying to say that we're trying to do additional things so we can bring our level of turf management up and compete with surrounding areas and continue to draw people in that we draw. I mean, if they, you know, if we don't want to be innovative, then, you know, we're going, you know, we're eventually going to fall behind. But, you know, I'll look at that. I mean, yeah, we can cut it back, either that or I'll just have to, I'll just have to jump around. I mean, in order to aerate, you know, in order to do those aerate and aeration practices, it takes one man on the aerator, one person on the sweeper, two people to blow, one person to top dress and one person to drag. So it's six people in order for that to move continually. And, you know, in order to put, so you're putting 12 people out if you're going to run two machines. So, you know, normally, if we have the extra time, I can aerate six greens in two hour, two and a half hours, I jump off the aerator and I jump on the top dresser. And then I top dress for an hour and a half, then I jump off the top dresser and back on the aerator so I can finish before golf comes around.
Just something to think about, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the loss of, the loss of revenue, if we're talking clubhouse and everything else, right? Trying to figure out, and that's a big chunk. I mean, 80,000 is not a small.
Well, I, I understand the, the calculations, but I'd like to get, I mean, like you mentioned, it's been done for a day or two, or for a year or two now, at least one year. We could, I don't know if we did, but we could collect the data on those years and see if we had an issue with significant loss or not and how we could, how we could recoup it. But again, I mean, if that's, if that's the feeling, then, then I won't do it, but I'm going to have to find another way, which probably be more disruptive than not to step up.
I'm not asking you not to do it, Steve. I'm asking you to open everybody's minds up to what I just said about the loss of the revenue, right? And have that discussion and dialogue with golf committee, with, with Dana and just see what the revenues are. I'm pretty sure you'll come up with close to my number, if not higher than my number. And that's a significant number, right? I mean, if you're, if you're bringing in 160 profit, 80,000, it's a 50% loss in profitability, right? So that's the reason I'm a numbers guy. I'm looking at the numbers, seeing how do we generate more revenue without, you know, hurting anything? We've, we've had that practice for 20 years where we weren't, you know, maintenance Mondays and then we jumped on it, I guess, two or three years ago. It's been something that people have been beating me up a little bit on here and there and I say, you know what, it's, things are working out pretty good. We're still profitable. You know, we're not costing taxpayers any money, but I'll look into it a little bit further, right? And we're buying new equipment, trying to make it, maintenance because of labor is so difficult to hire. I think that's some of the reasons why we're buying new equipment and making the job a little bit, I don't want to say easier, but more efficient for our maintenance staff because of the lack of labor that we can find, right? So we're, we're making those investments.
Yeah, it's, you know, for, for golf course maintenance, it's always been hurry up and get out of my way. But when.
You know, I'm going to buy you a bunch of big LED lights and you're going to work at night.
Well, then, you know, I've got no problem working at night. You just got to figure out when you're going to water. So if I work at 12 o'clock at night, I can't cut fairway sprinkler heads, so I'll have to water at 7 o'clock in the morning and still get in the way. No, it's, it's interesting, I said, we're just trying to, to make a, to make a step up and to make an improvement. And I know that's always, it's always been the argument, you know, hurry up and get out of our way. You know, no, we don't want to spend the time to do this, but the next day, oh geez, your greens were rolling terribly yesterday. Well, that's because we couldn't finish or couldn't do anything.
We've always, we've always had, under your realm, we've always had a good golf course, right? The greens, everything's over.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'd say.
This Monday started, I've talked to a lot of people, the difference in the golf course condition from three years ago, four years ago to today, there's certain areas that are better, there's certain areas you couldn't notice anything. So I'm like, okay, whatever, we'll have the dialogue, let the dialogue run free with the golf committee, see what everybody's got to say. What are the ups? What are the downs?
I'm just surprised because nobody, you know, again, they're not going to, you know, you know, normal course of action is not complaining to me because, you know, they're not usually there. I, I haven't heard those types of things. There's two or three groups that, you know, consistently play in that particular window that have been making the most significant amount of noise. And nobody's ever come, mentioned anything to me.
Well, I know there's a league, I think it's a Christian league, actually, that plays Monday afternoons, right? It's pretty much the only ones we really get in, other than a few people that might be able to.
Yeah, they play, they play in the afternoon on Monday.
Like 20 people could shoot off at 11.
Which we don't, we don't impact them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, it's the only one we can get out. I think it's like 80, 90 people are playing that league, something like that. What else? Just.
Something to think about.
Keeping dialogue going with everybody, right? Trying to figure things out, increasing revenues and how we're going to pay for things moving forward.
Yep.
Right? And if I know I'm losing revenue from one segment of the pitcher, right? Try to adjust that little segment and say, how do we improve on that? Maybe we don't lose 80, maybe we lose 50. So 30,000 increase in profitability, right? Just going to figure it out. Maybe we open up an hour earlier instead of eight o'clock, like you said, you did say eight o'clock, right?
Correct. Tee times, you know, they, they, we all, currently tee times are altered on the, on the weekends. And of course, a lot of, you know, the tee times will start, you know, you know, daylight savings has an impact on some of them.
Sure.
You know, and then the weekends, we usually, there's usually a progression. I mean, this is something that, you know, the golf committee could, could sit down and, and put, put that type of thing together. Say, okay, this is our, this is our, you know, between this block, as you and I were talking about this afternoon, you know, about the whole half hour deal that you had mentioned about the, you know, about the daylight savings. From this particular period to this particular period, this is our morning start time, this is our weekend start time. Once we get into the summer, I mean, bloody, it, it times out there, it's daylight 5:15, 5:30. And we have, I mean.
But we don't want anybody hitting you in the head with a ball that early, so we're going to be careful.
No, as long as, for my routine maintenance, as long as I have an hour, because I start, I mean, I'm out there changing cups at four o'clock in the morning with a headlamp on my head, so I don't have to worry about people doing just what you said. You know, and that's, you know, people, that's the type of thing we do in order to not be in the way.
Right.
And we can do that. I mean, I will be more than happy to start, I mean, because, you know, my guys are, you know, you know, knock on wood, hopefully everybody's back this, this year. I mean, my guys have been doing this 17, 18, 19 years. And, you know, my guys come in half an hour early just to sit there and shoot the breeze each day that they work. They have no problem coming in and starting work at 4:30. But like you said, put, you know, spend a couple hundred dollars on LED lights for all the fairway mowers and so they can see better because the lights that come on the machine aren't that great. And, you know, we'll light it up and go. I just have to change my irrigation practices because the system doesn't shut down till 5:00 AM. Guys don't like to get wet, you know? 4:30 in the morning.
That's just 90 degrees, right?
Yeah.
Thanks, Dana.
Appreciate it.
Make sure you check that paperwork for the bunker stuff.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to Dan. I probably can't get ahold of him now, but I'll get ahold of him. He's a morning person, I kind of saw him for a thing.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Good night.
See you. All right. Next on the agenda, accept golf, accept golf exploratory committee mission statement. Generally, everybody got a copy of this and was asked for input. It looks like this is the most updated version of this with everybody's input.
Looks good to me, Mr. Ginn.
Is there a motion to accept the golf exploratory committee mission statement?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
I have a yes. All right.
Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Warner.
While we're on this subject, I raised at the last meeting, I don't know if we, we have, if you all have the time next week, but I was hoping that maybe we could set a, a meeting just to deal with the golf committee and the exploratory committee to get them their charge and get them to work. Because if we're not going to meet until the end of February, so anyway, I just want to throw that out there.
Sure. Yeah, I'll take a look at the schedule that I have and I'll pop a couple of dates out there. Originally, before you were going to be out of town this week, we, I was going to sneak it into the meeting.
Yeah.
But I actually think it would probably work out better if it was just a sole meeting. This way we don't have to fill up the agenda with a bunch of other items and we can just tackle the one.
Before I understand, everybody has been sworn in. Sydney and I have been player talking that, so everybody's sworn in and the committee is ready to roll.
Excellent.
So to be clear on what Mr. Warner just said, is that, is that to have the golf exploratory committee joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the golf management committee?
No, what we would do, Mr. Gasper, what I would suggest is the Board of Selectmen, we have the golf management committee and this new exploratory committee, and we try to them basically reiterate what this mission statement is that we just accepted and say, to them basically reiterate what this mission statement is that we just accepted and say, look, you know, here's your job, you've got 120 days or whatever we have in the mission statement to come back with a recommendation, work in concert with the golf management committee, so on and so forth. But really, just to kind of kick off the process.
Okay, so the only reason why I asked, selectmen Warner, is if we're going to do that kind of a meeting, I don't think most people aren't available during the day. So if we were to do something, maybe we'd have to do it, maybe a 6:00 PM thing, right? To make sure everybody can show up and everybody gets it, right? Because even 5 o'clock, some people do work out of town and they just can't get here on time. So that's the only reason why I mentioned it, if that's the way it's going to go, I think it's, it's going to be like a 6:00, 6:30 thing and the way Mr. Warner is describing, it's probably 20 minutes, half an hour max, right?
That's right.
So, I'm fine, I'm just trying to throw out time, you know, if we're going to do something, let's make sure the times are counting for everyone, that's all.
Yep.
Bangin' out. Make sure it's not Thursday. I got a master plate, Thursday, Thursdays are going.
And I would just ask if we're able, Mr. Chairman, to come up with a date that we work, Sydney work with both committees, because I guess they would probably have to post it themselves as well if they're all going to be here, just those logistics.
Perfect. All right. Next on the agenda, revenue review.
I've given the board new sheets and the margin, you'll see the, as far as the state aid, it reflects the governor's figures. As we know, the governor's figures are usually the lowest and the House and Senate then will determine their figures and then there's usually a conference committee that determines the final figures. Every meeting, I'll be giving the board a sheet to update them. Right now, we're looking at an increase in revenue of $495,870.
From state only?
No, total.
Total? 400 what? That's not including two and a half?
Yes, everything.
Can't. Last year's two and a half went up $543,000. I got to be more than that this year.
Yeah, but remember, part of the revenue that is not reflected this year is $132,000 from overlay.
Oh, you're doing, you're doing bottom line year over year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's horrible, yeah, we can't do that. Yeah, I know, I got, I know what you're saying, yeah, that's, that's bad, I know. Yeah, no, because of the way we funded different things last year, right?
Yep. So, but we'll look, usually there's about $100,000 difference between original governor's figures and the final legislative figures.
I look quickly at state, it doesn't look that big of an increase, like miniscule.
Yeah, although this one is miniscule, but it'll, and we don't know, the governor and the legislature are promising increase in chapter 70 from the millionaire's tax.
Peanuts in the realm of things.
Promises, promises.
It's peanuts in the realm of things though, right?
Same thing, something about during the new budget, they're trying to rewrite chapter 90 as well to give towns more empowerment, as they say, but maybe have to release the figures on that. So, once again, I think really selling, overselling what we're going to end up getting is a dangerous game.
And what's that, the empowerment, municipal empowerment act that they just let us tax different ways now? So it's not really them giving us more, it's just.
No, it's them telling us.
Them telling us, hey, you can go out and tax your people even more now. It's not working out for everybody.
And then I've given the board a second sheet that's from South Shore South Coast Town Administrators that just shows what towns are relying on overrides or debt exclusions. And as you can see my comment on the first slide. I said it first.
He was talking. There's just so much money.
It's not a rosy picture.
No, it hasn't been for a long time, right? And there's only so much money to go around and, you know, everybody needs to understand that. But the problem is, is too many people don't understand that.
Yep.
Sad but true. Just do what we have to do to.
Yep. Hunker down, put it together.
We'll figure things out.
We always do. Selectment announcements, Mr. Warner?
No, it's not an announcement, but I guess, I don't know what it is, other than it's a random thought. I got a call from one of the selectmen, Behaven, who I guess has caught me that the school department is looking at regionalization. And I don't know, I don't know what's going on, I've heard rumors of that, but I don't know how accurate that is. I don't know if we can chase that down, I just think as, I think if we're going to make the town and the school department, school board is going to look at that, the selectmen should at least be apprised of that, it's a major, it's a major development, it's a major initiative. So I don't know if we can reach out to them and figure out what's going on, but I think it was, it caught me off guard, so, you know, just leave it at that.
Gotcha. Just to, just to kind of piggyback on that, just to give you some insight, I spoke with Ms. Gomes in regards to that and they're actually very, very much in the infancy period in this and they will be putting together a committee strictly for that. And she asked, she asked if I wanted to be involved and I said yes, but we haven't even discussed anything yet. Obviously, you know, she asked me as chairman if I wanted to be involved, so I would bring that to your attention as a, as a full board, you know, before I accepted anything like that. But I did tell her in the preliminary phase, I'd be more than happy to be involved with that. I just didn't have any updates because there hasn't been any updates yet.
And you know what, then I stand corrected, those outreach made, then that's great.
Yeah, and at this point, and just to be clear, it was just outreach at this point, like I have seen zero documents or any information pertaining to it, just because this, the process haven't even, hasn't even really kicked off yet.
Fair enough.
Mr. Gasper?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Selectment announcements, I got a couple of things. I'd like to say happy early birthday to Selectman Gasper. This Saturday?
This Saturday, that's correct, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You look good for 39?
75.
Two different reactions, there we go.
What, the year I was born, right?
I'd also like to, I'd also like to just bring back up the Police Assessment Center. I want to, you sent an email yesterday, I don't know, I didn't look at the recipients on the progress of it, but just if you could possibly give us an update where we stand right now?
All right, we've been going back and forth, the interim chief and I have been going back and forth with civil service and we have determined that there was an inquiry from an individual in civil service who is not the person we've been dealing with for three months concerning the Form 30, which is really the job description which you folks have just recently finalized and filing that with civil service to create, in effect, create the position. And at that point, it's a Form 30, they call it, that point then we get a requisition, we go forward in the Assessment Center delegation letters and they've already, the person we were dealing with has already been informed what the board wants in the delegation letters. And at that point then, the RFP, they tell us we can release an RFP and give us the dates for what's going on, as I put in the email to everyone, and then we go forward with the Assessment Center. And there is a 10-week study period for the Assessment Center.
So there's a 10-week study period, the back and forth, I just wish I could go quicker, I don't know if, has town council been involved in this?
Yes.
So if the, we got a copy of an RFP to send out for the Assessment Center for individuals to do at Assessment Center, right? Can't we get that out?
We have to get the dates from civil service.
Okay, so we need to expedite that this week.
Yeah.
So we got to get civil service on the horn this week. We got to stop delays as fast, as much as we can from a board's perspective. So we need answers from civil service this week, whatever we need for dates, get that RFP out because that's probably a 21 days, 30 day out for RFP. However, we expedite that process, right? And in that 21 to 30 days, civil service can be working with you and figuring, town council and figuring out delegation letters and agreeing to that.
And then they have to, civil service has to talk or communicate with the chosen Assessment Center and determine the design and approve what the Assessment Center is proposing. After the Assessment Center meets with this board and gets their view of what should be in the Assessment.
We need the first expedite getting out for an RFP, the Assessment Center, right?
We have to do, before we do that, we have to create the, and have them approve the deputy chief position if you're going to combine both with the, in the Assessment.
Yeah, and you brought, you said you've already let them know that this is the board's purview. So they already have those documents, correct?
What?
They have to approve the deputy chief role?
They, they have to approve the job description.
Okay. Do they have what we decided on as a job description yet?
No, they will as of tomorrow. We have to fill out a Form 30 for this new gentleman who's entered into the fray and as the interim chief said, as soon as we found out that there were two people at civil service who have not been talking to each other through the whole process, both individuals went silent and so we've had to move them along.
Let's expedite it tomorrow morning and then.
Mr. Kelly, sorry, the civil service is a state agency, correct?
Yep.
Can we contact representative, so our reps, send them on TME to see if they'll get and they'll make a call to help light a fire into these people?
Yeah, it's, we just found out about this gentleman, because we've been dealing with a woman and she's been extremely helpful walking us through it. And all of a sudden, this gentleman appeared and said he'd been communicated and wondered why he didn't get anything back from Lisa Leonard.
Well, priority number one, Assessment Center tomorrow morning, right?
Yep.
Get on it. We got to get that ball moving, to be fair to everybody in the department, and they got a 10-week study period. We got to go out for an RFP just for the assessment, then the board's going to meet with these folks to talk to them, right? So there's some lag time between then and then and let's, we should be having lag times overlap each other, right?
Exactly.
So that we're not going too much further out. I mean, this whole thing started off sloppy under the past chief, you know, with civil service, all of the deadline for criteria, September 1st, that was, that didn't happen and September 30th, that didn't happen and it just keeps. So, let's get it, let's get it done and over with, talk to the new guy, tell him whatever we need, get a punch list, say this is what we need to do, this is what we're looking to do, give him everything that we're looking to do and get feedback ASAP on him.
We had, I actually talked to the interim chief and he and I agreed we're going to have to get both of these people, contact both of these people, even if it's a conference call, and find out who actually has jurisdiction over this.
Yep. Get everybody on the horn, find out who we need to deal with.
First thing in the morning.
Streamline it and we'll just make it happen.
First thing in the morning.
Add it to our long list of stuff we have to get done.
Make sure Darren Klein, if he needs to look at that, an RFP for the assessment, I looked over, everything over, there's one page, I don't think it's going to be included, I could show you later on, the correction that needs to be made, but I don't think that goes into the RFP, that goes out for public notice, so I don't think it's a big deal, but I've looked it over, it looks pretty good to me and I know Selectman Warner has looked it over the last time he, we met and he said he was fine with it as well. Is that correct, Mr. Warner?
Yes, sir.
So, let's get it on, move it along.
Yep. All right. Get the requisition for the new position.
Yep, and just for information, gentlemen, I just want to give a quick thanks to Chief Ireland again for securing a state equipment grant. He's been going for these since he's taken over, we actually did get him previously, but he was integral in that as well and he was able to secure some grant money so he can get new firefighting hoods to protect the firefighters' necks and faces, some ventilation fans to clear smoke and combustible gas indicators for the rest of the fleet, which is a great thing. And like I say every time, Chief Ireland has been on top of every possible funding source he can get and I want to appreciate, show him with some appreciation for always looking forward to applying for any grant with our permission as possible. So big thanks to Chief Ireland on that one.
Kudos.
All right. Last on the agenda, gentlemen, executive session, executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Finance Department, added steelworkers, police contract and asked me if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, the board will not return to public session, conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
I mean, yes, we're in executive session.